All right. Let's go. Okay, that's interesting.
Should have sent it to you.
Yeah. All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Agenda for Braintree for October fourteenth. We do have a full board this evening, and as usual, we are here in person for public comment, and it is being broadcast on B-Cam through YouTube, so there's multiple ways for participation. We have received some written comments, and those do get distributed to the board. That being said, we will jump right in, as we normally do, to our old-new business at 7:00 PM, and then we can move on to the public hearings at 7:15. The first item we have is a request for ASBILT approval for forty-two Hayward Street. And I know that we do have some information on that. Yes, Director?
I just wanted to make a note, so the Conservation Commission met last Thursday, and they did not close that, and so they're going to do a site visit, just to give the board an update on that project. However, we do hold a bond. I did check in and make a site visit, and to my, you know, to my assumption in inspection, work has been completed.
I'm sorry, what was the last part?
The work has been completed.
Okay.
The Conservation just had to look at a couple plantings, and then go through their process.
So in your, in your understanding of, of our, our permit that's getting closed out, is there anything tied with the Conservation Commission?
Nope.
Okay. All right. So we do have plans and some information on that. Is there anyone in the audience here for that application? No? Okay. Are there any members of the board that have any questions for staff on this request? Nope. All right, so with that, I would be looking for a motion to grant ASBILT approval and release a surety.
So moved.
We have a motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second? Second by Member Conley. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. One down. All right. The next item we have is a request for a minor modification, file number eight oh three two fifty Granite Street. Now, we've received some materials on this also from Attorney Marinelli. Did you want to speak on this, Attorney Marinelli? Oh, I don't know if your microphone is on. It's hard to hear you. Look at our IT director over there. Okay. I think that's good. That seemed, seemed more like it.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right.
Good evening. Frank Marinelli for the record, and I'm pleased to appear on behalf of Dick's Sporting Goods, Inc. An extraordinary opportunity for our town to have Dick's House of Sport occupy the former Nordstrom space at South Shore Plaza. Dick's does have a relationship with Simon at other locations, so kudos to Simon for being able to attract a very unique tenant to one hundred and fifty thousand square feet of vacant space. You know what that does to a real estate model. There, as retail is contracting nationwide with Lord &amp; Taylor leaving, in this particular space, Nordstrom leaving, Dick's is actually occupying spaces of that magnitude. We've given all of the materials as far as Dick's influence on shopping malls in New York, Tennessee, and elsewhere, where they elevate and they accelerate other retail tenants. There's great synergy when there's a Dick's store. Very unique concept. Dick's was started in nineteen forty-eight by Dick Stack and, and his brother. They had a fishing store in Upper State New York, and the son, Dick, has grown the store, which is now publicly held. The company is publicly held with over a hundred thousand employees, and they have over seven hundred and twenty-five locations nationwide. They are the nation's largest sports retailer. They have less than twenty-five House of Sports. House of Sport is a unique concept. If you've been to the one at Prudential, where I generally spend hundreds of dollars on a Saturday with my son, but, you know, they have taken over the Lord &amp; Taylor space, and they have all sorts of Kleat Center footwear, Michael Jordan section. It's really a terrific, terrific concept. So it's a great opportunity for Braintree. We're asking that this, I, I don't even know if it's a modification, quite frankly, but if it is, it's a minor modification, because it's single-user retail Nordstrom to single-user retail Dick's, and there's, there's no change other than seventeen hundred and seventy square foot at the base perimeter, and that is to accommodate the new facades. The, the facades are obviously a change, but they're a change for the better. It's investment in Braintree. They're going to put in a, an approximate thirty million dollar, what's called a Claris score, Claris story. It's a bump-up type skylight at the top, and it'll bring daylight through the core of the building. So it's, it's quite a construction project to install the Claris story and daylight all the way through the three floors. That's about north of twenty-five million. And the seventeen hundred and seventy square feet at the perimeter of the building footprint, the current Nordstrom store, as you know, is pretty much a box that was built in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. So they're creating some indentations, as you see on these iconic facades that they have for their brand, and that results in about seventeen hundred and seventy square feet of additional impervious, but there's plenty of room under the, under the zoning legend that Langen prepared. You can cover thirty percent of the, of the lot, the South Shore Plaza lot. This, this would be like a point one percent difference, which is still well under the thirty percent. So for minor modifications on oh eight oh three, which is the planning board decision that allowed Nordstrom and allowed Target, I can refer the board to the ZOM project, where you found a minor modification for the South Shore Plaza to separate the seven acres, and, and that's going to be conveyed to ZOM for the residential. So between the residential and the Dick's, we have close to two hundred million dollars investment in, in this area of the South Shore Plaza. So would respectfully request your approval of the minor modification, and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Director, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing in particular. I think, you know, reviewing the decision from oh eight, this is a single retail to a single retail, and it could be classified, it can be classified as a minor modification.
Great, thank you. I looked at it, I thought the same thing, based on the changes. Are there any members with comments, questions? Member McComme?
Thank you. So, Mr. Marinelli, when you're renovating the seventeen hundred, additional seventeen hundred square foot feet, is that going to come out from where the current location is today? Is it going to come forward into the parking area?
Yeah, around, small additions around the perimeter, where the new facade kind of undulates in and out, as you, as you can see on the facade elevations. There's, there's three sides. There's the northerly, which faces Common Street, easterly, which faces the Flaherty School, and southerly, which faces the dam. And so each of the elevations will have those kinds of indentations with the column, column facade that, that Dick's has. And I, I would just add that we are seeking relief from the zoning board, because at the plaza, there are many decisions, and one of the decisions oh eight twenty-nine is for increased height of, of Nordstrom. When Nordstrom was built, they had to get a height variance. So our relief is not with the planning board, our relief is with the zoning board for the height, height parapets that those facades will entail, and also for the, the signage, which, you know, when you talk with the zoning board staff, recognizing that the signage restrictions in Article Nine are pretty restrictive, and the Nordstrom store has relief for that as well, under decision oh eight dash fifty. So that's where the relief for what Dick's would like to do is, is, is happening, is at the zoning board with very reasonable requests, and then with the building department, because they have to take the Claris story and put, put it into construction drawings, and those construction drawings have to be reviewed by the building department. But that's, that's, in short, what we see as the jurisdiction, the building department for the Claris story and the inside renovations, and the zoning board for the facades. The seventeen hundred square feet is, is de minimis. It's well within the, the allowed impervious surface at South Shore Plaza.
Okay, so just to come back to my original question, so I see, so the seventeen hundred square feet additional is on the three sides?
Yes.
It totals seventeen hundred?
That's right.
Okay. So how much further does it come out? Is it ten feet?
I mean, I'm not an engineer, but it's on the, it's on the floor, on the site plan.
Right. I don't, I don't think I have that drawing.
What we would pay attention to on the zoning side is obviously the zoning legend that shows there's no, no intrusion into, no need for variance at all. Fits.
Okay, I mean, I'll just ask the director, do we, I'm just curious, from where the building is today, how much it's going to come out?
Seventeen hundred square feet is spread around all three sides of the building.
Right.
So in some areas, the building will actually be coming in a little bit, and in some areas, the building actually comes out, right? And so it's kind of, you, you lose a little bit in some areas, and you're going to, you're going to gain a little bit in the others. When you look at the new facade and the new rent arenas, I think it's going to be de minimis across, across all three sides.
Let's just make it simple. How much is it going to come? How, how much forward is it going to come?
I think in some areas.
Five feet, six feet?
No, I think in some areas, you may see it come forward about maybe three to four feet, and then I think some areas, you may see the, the facade decline and or go back into the existing building about one to two feet, right? And so as you, as you go around all three sides, that's where that nexus comes in, that seventeen hundred square feet. So I don't think you're going to change, there's going to be no change to the existing curb line. I think the existing sidewalks that are around the building today remain the same. I think it's just going to be kind of in that landscaped area, which is around Nordstrom's, if I remember correctly. That's the main area that will be affected by this new facade.
Okay, well, that was going to be my follow-up question. Is, is, was the sidewalk going to change at all?
No.
Okay.
To my knowledge, and, and that the sidewalk doesn't change, and there's just a kind of a give and a take around all three sides.
Right, okay.
And the linear feet of the three sides is over six hundred and sixty feet. I think it's six hundred and sixty-nine linear feet, so when you think of that on the three sides and seventeen hundred, it's, it's really not, as, as the planning director said, it's really de minimis.
Right. Again, my, my main question was, is the sidewalk going to be affected? So, okay, I understand. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just trying to look, I couldn't find the dimension, but, all right. Any other members with comments, questions? Yes?
Question. So this, it's a lot of space, and that's great, is, do they do like indoor tennis courts and golf simulators, as well as selling the sporting goods, the traditional project?
Yes, so, so they do have golf simulators. They have, they generally do the House of Sport based on the city or town and the region, and so they'll have, they'll have a batting cage, they'll have a rock, they'll have rock climbing. Those are some of the things that I know right now, but I, as, as Brian Basic, who's the Director of Developments, has said to me, "Look, we improve on every House of Sport. We learn something, and we get better, and Braintree's going to get the best. Braintree's going to get the experience of everything that we have at all of the other House of Sports."
Okay.
And, and the planning director has met, we've had a couple of meetings, one by Zoom and one in person with, with Brian here, and they're very excited about coming to town.
Okay, so, and the patronage would be relatively steady? It's, it's not like, you know, like me going December twenty-third and buying? That's the only time I would go to Nordstrom's personally. And this is a more of a, an even regular returning patronage?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's, it's, it's pretty level. You know, if you go to, we go to the Dixon, Denham, or Brockton, or Hanover, or even at the Prue, it's, it's totally manageable. It's no, no big rush.
Thank you.
Member Conley?
This is a great addition and a really solid replacement at that site. Do you have a sense yet of what the construction timetable might look like?
So the, I think the last indication we had was, if not by the end of twenty-six, hopefully at the latest, you know, end of first quarter, twenty-seven.
Very good, thank you.
My only question was in regards to signage. Obviously, with ZOM going in, neighbors were particular about the heights and, and shielding from their properties. Will that Dick sign be visible to any of the properties that are adjacent?
I think it would be hard to see it, but it's, when we met with the planning director and, and, and Brian Basic, they talked about the ability to shut it off within an hour of closing, shut off the illumination, so.
Oh, things, oh, here we go. As, as a historic priority, they would shut that sign off one hour after closing, seven nights a week.
I guess, I'm just thinking about like if next to my house, or, like, I think, is there, are we asking for a variance to be able to build that sign higher? Is that part of this? Did I hear that correctly?
So the sign is located at a higher level? Yes.
So I just guess.
But I mean, a portion of it, a portion of it.
Look, I, I don't particularly have a dog in the race beyond just thinking like if I live next to the mall, and like, right now, there are trees that cover where that Nordstrom's top level would be, and is there now going to be a Dick's that's standing up above that, and like, having a look at that when I have a barbecue, I guess, is what I'm getting to. I don't know, has anybody done, like, just a verification, then that's not going to be a problem?
Well, that's going to, that's being right now discussed at the zoning board, or will be discussed at the zoning board for those variances.
Right, I caught that part about the zoning board, I guess, should we just document that that'll be figured out or something?
Yeah, I mean, I think the question before us is whether or not this is a minor modification, and if so, if we like it, or as far as if it should be approved under the guidance. So the site plan, the current permit says that there can be a minor modification if, if one of the, if, if the change being made doesn't affect one of the factors that the board relied on in issuing the permit. Just looking for the language. So it's condition thirteen. Any change affecting the criteria on the zoning bylaw on which the special permit authority relied when issuing the approval. So really, the only change that triggers a site plan approval is a change in square footage on the ground. The height isn't one of the thresholds, so that's where I'm looking at it, as far as being a minor modification that doesn't have any difference in the scheme of our authority. And then, of course, the zoning board takes a look at the height, and so if there's a question with that.
All that being said, I'm pumped. Let's get a rock wall in here. That sounds awesome.
Member, can I have any questions?
I had no questions. Seems like a great addition to the mall.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, so seeing no other questions, I think we'd be looking for a motion to approve the minor modification request. So moved. Motion by Member Conley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. And the next item on our business agenda is the approval of the twenty twenty-six planning board meeting schedule. Did everyone have a chance to take a look at that? And are there any questions, comments? What does it, oh, the second Tuesday of each month, unless otherwise noted, so that is not a Tuesday. All right. If there are no questions, we're looking for a motion to approve the planning board meeting schedule.
So moved.
Motion by Member Kane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kent. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we are past seven fifteen, so we can move on to the first item on our public hearing agenda, which is a new public hearing for sixty Columbian Street, planning board file twenty-five oh nine. And because this is a public hearing, we need to go through the process of reading the legal ad.
All right. Notice is being given by the planning board under the provisions of Master Attorney Law Chapter Forty-Eight, Section Nine and Eleven of the Braintree zoning ordinance, one thirty-five, Articles five, six, eleven, and twelve, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven fifteen PM in the Braintree Town Hall. Welcome. The planning board will consider the application for special permit, grading permit, in a modification of Site Plan Approval Decision ninety-four dash fourteen filed by Banner Park Campus L.S. Lee as the applicant. The applicant is seeking to construct and expand the existing parking lot, including new grading, stormwater, infrastructure, and pedestrian and accessible improvements. The existing parking lot will be expanded to the east and to the north of the existing commercial structure, and will result in addition of twenty-six thousand five hundred square feet of new impervious area. The northerly edge of the parking lot and a slope along the western side of the commercial structure will be regraded and a retaining wall be installed. This is less than four feet in height. Will be constructed along the westerly parking area. The, the property is located at sixty Columbian Street, zoned highway business district, as shown on the assessor's map, one thousand one hundred and twelve dash zero, plot twenty-two F. The size, is the total lot size is thirty-three, excuse me, thirty point three acres. To review the application, department, excuse me, to review the application, please see the Department of Planning and Community Development at One JFK Memorial Drive, open Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from eight thirty AM to four thirty PM, Tuesday from eight thirty AM to seven PM, and Friday, eight thirty to one o'clock, and/or on the town's website.
All right, thank you. With that, we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the board, Carlos Sculte was civil and environmental consultants, were the engineers for the project, on behalf of the applicant for the project. So as mentioned with the reading in of the public notice, this is for a special permit, for a grading permit for the project. So this is at the sixty Columbian address, which is adjacent to some other developments that have been there in the past. It's a largely underutilized site. It hasn't been utilized or active for quite some time now. So the project includes basically re-engaging and reactivating an existing twenty thousand square foot building that's on the site today, and expanding the parking lot from an eighty-five space parking lot to a hundred fifty space parking lot. And I can walk through some of the site plans here, but ultimately, the site, as mentioned earlier, is thirty point three acres, and the work is contained within a two and a half acre portion of the site. The vast majority of the site is wooded, and we're not touching anything there, we're not modifying the woods, we're not within conservation jurisdiction, we're outside the hundred-foot buffer zone, so purely here for the grading permit as part of that application. What you have in front of you on the screen is the building that we have there. It's a two-story building that's twenty thousand square feet, as mentioned earlier. The light grade areas are the limits of the existing pavement that are there today, and the darker areas that you, you can see are where we're expanding or removing and replacing the existing pavement on the site. So that basically includes some expansions to the north, closer to an existing access drive that provides access to this parcel, as well as an adjacent parcel through an easement, and it includes expansion to the parking in the bottom right portion of the page of just a few feet there, and providing additional and improved enclosures for the trash storage and enclosure, as well as expanding the pavement on the page north side, which is the east side of the building, to provide some additional parking on that side of the site there. So just pushing out the pavement a little bit to provide additional parking for the tenants' demands for this facility. This is the new building where the RMV has relocated to, and they are active here, so we're in front of you for an after-the-fact grading permit here. Peter, I don't know if you could slide to the, the next slide here, and I could walk through the stormwater management. So what we've done from the stormwater management perspective, the existing site basically included catch basins and had limited stormwater management facilities on-site. It discharged through overland flow on the east side of the site to wetlands to the south that are ultimately more than a hundred feet away from the development, as well as the, on the west side of the building, which is the page south side. There's a catch basin and a, and a pipe network, which also discharged through an existing pipe outfall closer to the wetlands to the south. So what we did was maintain the existing drainage patterns. We included a subsurface stormwater detention system that provides additional stormwater treatment. We have a new catch basin, new water quality structure that provides additional stormwater capture treatment quality improvements. And then in the existing catch basins that are on the page south side of the site, which largely remained unchanged, we installed water quality inserts that were included in the existing catch basins on the site that provide improved water quality treatment for the development as a whole. And then there were some minor grading around the edges to help improve accessibility to the development, as well as improve the frontage of the building. There was an expansion of the, the pavement and the sidewalk there to help with the access into the building, to make that a little bit prominent, and easier to use for the people coming and going, safer for people traveling into the building as well. And as mentioned earlier, there was a small retaining wall that was added on the page south side where the pavement was expanded, less than four feet in height, that just allowed us to minimize the additional cutting and any sort of clearing that otherwise would have been needed in that area. All the construction was done in accordance with the plans that were prepared, include erosion controls around the perimeter. There were silt socks placed along the perimeter that ensured that there was no sediment runoff during construction. We also included a copy of the Erosion Sediment Control Plan with the grading permit narrative, along with a long-term operations and maintenance plan that the applicant will be implementing moving forward for the maintenance of the stormwater management system. moving forward for the maintenance of the stormwater management system. We understand there were also some comments from the Department of Public Works and the Stormwater Management Division, looking for some additional information. Earlier today, we provided some additional documentation, photographs during construction installation, as well as some additional supporting materials that were provided. So with that, we welcome any additional questions or comments that the board may have.
All right, thank you. Director Metcalf, anything you want to add?
Thank you so much. So the planning office did provide a memo regarding this application. Just a note, so this is also known locally as the old Mass Lottery Building, or the Mass Lottery Building. The R M V., which is located at Templeton Street, is moving up to this location. This work was done prior to permitting. The building office, when doing some inspections up within that, within the building, getting that building ready for the R M V.'s move, did come across as work being done. So that's how this project came up, and this application kind of came through the Planning Board. So this work is, has been done. I've been out, I've seen the site, I've also seen the, the pictures regarding the, the drainage that has been installed. And so everything is, really looks pretty good, except that, you know, the, a permit should have been obtained prior to the work. And so I know it's one of those situations where we're going back and permitting a grading permit, however, this kind, that's how this project came about, per se. And I just kind of wanted to put that out there, let the planning board know. However, working with Carlos, talking with the applicant, they were very apologetic. They did follow instructions from the planning office and the steps that they had to take, and I would say their staff, including Carlos, were very professional, and has gone, and has gone above and beyond what has been requested and what has been needed. So I would support this application moving through from, from the planning office's standpoint.
All right, thank you. Member McComme, this is right up your wheelhouse, the after-the-fact grading permits.
You know, it's, we've had a number of residents who did work and then came back for permit. We've had some, you know, institutional clients do the same thing. So maybe you could explain to us how this happened and why it did, and, you know, kind of, it's instructive for us. So for example, maybe what we should have done is stop work, and then come to us for the permit, so we could review, you know, stormwater, parking, cover, you know, go down the list. So could you explain to us why, why this happened?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if you can still hear me here. But from our perspective, so we met with the client, we were in front of the board, you know, a few years ago on a, on a much larger project at the same site. This is essentially something that is a separate and distinct from that larger project.
That was a totally separate project.
Totally separate project.
Because I was on the board then.
Right.
Totally separate.
Yep, so, so we, we worked with the client, reviewed the scope of this project, we looked at, are we within Conservation Commission jurisdiction? Is there a change of use? Is there something that's going to trigger site plan review or special permit for this particular project, which is basically an expansion of the parking lot? And based on that review, it didn't look like those, those two major thresholds were something that were going to be triggered. We did look at some of the other criteria, whether or not there was a stormwater management permit, a grading permit that might be needed. And we looked at some of the criteria, and we talked to the client, we prepared site plans for the overall development. And I think it was just one of those things where there was maybe some starts and stops along the way, and it just fell through the cracks. And I think from the client's perspective, when they submitted a building permit, and that building permit was essentially approved, allowing them to move forward, their perception was that that would have been a check, maybe where it would have been routed through the various departments, and somebody would have raised their hand and said, okay, wait a minute, is it, is it just the building, or is there something else going on? So I think from the developer's perspective, they thought they were good to go once they had the building permit. And I think it was probably just an oversight when they started moving forward with that aspect of it.
Sure. But that, that's why they hire experts like you. You're supposed to tell them that's not how it's done.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, and sometimes it's-
Okay, so oversight, these are, you know, non-useful words. The bottom line is, you did work when you weren't supposed to, you didn't follow the process. You know, I could just come back to, what if somebody got hurt? You know, you have an unpermitted project going on. I think it's great, believe me, that the R M V. is, is moved over there, but, you know, we, we have to, we have to do things in the proper way, and you guys knew better. So, you know, it just, we see it all the time. And again, I just, I'm, I'm just afraid somebody's going to get hurt one of these days. So, you know, I, I get, I just want to make sure things, you know, move forward in this town and are done correctly. So that's, I, I think, again, I think it's great that the R M Vs, D M Vs, moving over there, but, you know, future reference, do it the right way. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member McComme. Member Kent?
I would second Member McComme's sentiments. I also took a drive through there yesterday. It looks, looks very good, but we need to follow the process.
Thank you. Member Conley?
I'll echo those sentiments. I think it's very problematic that the development team had this project go forward. Within that process, that, that team would know that, that they needed to check on something like this, and it really removes any opportunity for us to make any changes. And this process is important. We have residents come here, and we hold them to that standard, and a professional team should certainly meet that mark.
Member Kane?
Well said, Jen.
Nothing additional.
All right, thank you. Stoya, is there any update on the rest of the project that was permitted a few years ago? Is there anything that you couldn't speak to?
So obviously, the, yeah, so the building that was proposed where the R M V. has relocated is obviously not being proposed. They're looking at alternates and options for the overall development, and what might the rest of it turn into. I believe there's some concepts that we'd be in front of the planning department to talk about, obviously, before they get presented to the board, just to understand the process they're moving forward, and also to make sure that we have all the ducks in a row, and that that process goes smoothly moving forward, and we don't run into these kind of hiccups. So I would anticipate that we'd be in front of the, the planning department first to, to preview any sort of conceptual plans sometime in the near future.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, is there anyone here on sixty Colombian Street? Just come on up to the microphone, give your name and address, and then, any questions direct to me, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to respond.
Thank you. Deanna Murphy, seventy-seven, Tommy Moxway, we're in Weymouth, so we're the abutters to them. So I, that was why we came tonight, because we did see that the work was done, and then we got this saying that they were coming for a permit. So as an abutter, we like to know when things are happening. Obviously, we want to make sure that they're done correctly. The fact that the D P W. wasn't even involved to be able to do an inspection is also very concerning, to make sure that the drainage and the runoff was actually done properly. I know there was pictures, but having an actual inspector inspect it would have been nice. Obviously, I know that's your concern also. I also feel like it's kind of an excuse, it's very easy to send an email and say, we're confused as a professional team, and we're not sure if we need a permit for this or not. It takes five seconds, and as a professional team, that's what they should have done. It makes me feel nervous for the future of whatever they have planned, that they were able to get away with something like this without asking permission for it, understanding the permit process, which seems like it would have been very simple. So I do just hope that it's on your radar for the future, when they do decide to do plans, to make sure that they are aware of everything that they need to do, so the abutting neighbors and neighborhoods can be given ample enough time to be able to come to these meetings and be able to voice their opinions. So I just wanted to come up and state that it seems unprofessional, like it was said. There is a process for a reason, and with a company that big, it's concerning to me that it's just a, not even a slap on the wrist, obviously, it's just going to get approved because it's done. And it does look good, I went and looked at it, it does look nice, but there are reasons why these aren't placed. So, not more of a question, but just wanted to state my opinion and where I'm at as an abutting neighbor. Thank you.
Understood, definitely, thank you. Anyone else to speak on sixty Colombian Street? No, I would just, just echo that, I think that point goes to part of, of course, the reason of getting the permit and the notifications that go out, and building trust with the developer and the residents going forward, and that's one of the things that are a struggle, just with any project. And so the more that we can do to build the trust going forward, I think the better. And just, you know, as far as the materials that were presented, I do appreciate that it was a full, full-scale application. Some of what we've run into with, with homeowners is that it comes in piecemeal, because they don't really understand what to provide. So I do appreciate that all of the materials were provided, so that we have an opportunity to go through the best we can, of course, noting that there wasn't anybody from town overseeing the construction when it was happening. So I think that sort of leaves us, we have, the staff report has some recommended conditions, I under, so the photos you received some of, what, what's outstanding from your list?
Excuse me?
What's outstanding from your list of things that you're looking for?
So, um, so I, I was looking for affidavit from the, from the civil engineer describing the work, the stormwater work, and obviously confirming that that was done properly into the, to the plan. I know the applicant has spoken with our stormwater management team. Has an O N M. plan been submitted?
Yeah, as part of the grading permit application, that was part of the package, so maybe it just got missed.
Okay. So what needs to happen is they have to pull, they have to apply for a stormwater permit, a minor stormwater permit, which would include O N M. plan, operation maintenance plan, AutoCAD files, excuse me, HydroCAD files. The photos were, were, the photos of the insulation were submitted yesterday, so they were kind of, they received today, this morning. So, so really affidavit, and I know a, a, as-built plan was submitted today as part of the application package. So I think, you know, a major condition will be that a minor stormwater permit is possessed in, but through the stormwater department. And then the really only thing I'm, I'll be missing is affidavit confirming that the work was done to the standards of the plan.
And do you anticipate any issue getting the affidavit in the near future?
Nope. Based on what we saw, the, in the construction, we believe it was built per plan, so it shouldn't be a problem providing it.
Okay. All right, so my thought would be to just continue it to the November meeting, and then have an opportunity to get the draft conditions put together. Is there any other members who have other thoughts or questions? No. Oh, we have another public comment on this one? Yeah, sure, go ahead, just come up and give your name and address.
Thank you, my name is Robert Tomer, I work, I live in Central Ave. We take our dog up to walk in that area, and we were there tonight, and I don't know what happened with the registry, but people were, were exiting, there's two separate ways in and out, and each has two lanes. We saw in the course of ninety seconds, three people go down the entrance. And, you know, I don't know what's going on with the signage, I called the police, and the police told me the town, the town clerk. It didn't make any sense, but, I mean, I'm just, that's sort of like a P S A. I mean, someone should say something to the registry about putting signage, so when people exit the registry, they go the proper way, so we don't have a head-on collision at that intersection. When we were leaving, there were three cars going out, two on this side and one on this side, and it was, it was crazy. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. And just for the applicant, is there any question or comments with the continuance? Are you agreeable with the continuance?
Nope, that's fine, and we'll certainly talk to the, the owner and the R M V. about the signage as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, November is not a Tuesday, do you have the date of that?
November's meeting is going to be on Wednesday, the thirteenth. The day, Tuesday is actually, the twelfth, I'm sorry, thank you, Louise. The eleventh is Veterans Day, which is Tuesday, so we're going to meet the following, the Wednesday after.
Okay. All right, so we'll be looking for a motion to continue to November twelfth.
So moved.
We have a motion by Member McComme, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Next item on our agenda is two oh one Commerce Drive, six hundred Grove Street, Marimar Construction. If you could read the public notice, please.
Hold up my computer timed out. Of the, of this side. Did you send it to us? Notice is given by the Planning Board under the provisions of Master Attorney Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine and eleven, in the Braintree Zoning Chap, Zoning Ordinance, Chapter one thirty-five, Articles five, six, seven, eight, eleven, and fourteen, that a public hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, at seven fifteen P M. in the Braintree Town Hall. The Planning Board will consider the application for a major modification of Site Plan Review Decision eighteen dash sixteen filed by Marhar Construction LLC as the applicant. The applicant is seeking to construct a new thirty thousand square foot commercial structure for contractor warehousing use, including utilities, stormwater, infrastructure, parking, and landscaping improvements. Within Commerce Drive, the applicant proposes alterations to the existing landscaping island for allow a greater turning radius of the existing curb cut. The property is located at two oh one Commerce Drive and six hundred Grove Street, Zone Commercial, as shown on the assessor's map, one thousand one hundred and eighteen, plot seven and nine. The total size of plot seven is five point five four acres, and ten point five two nine acres for lot, for, excuse me, plot nine. To review the application, please see the Department of Planning and Community Development in Town Hall, one J F K Memorial Drive, on Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from eight thirty to four thirty P M., Tuesday from eight thirty A M. to seven P M., and Friday from eight thirty A M. to one o'clock P M., or also on the town's website.
Thank you. All right, I'll hear from the applicant.
Chair Crowell, members of the Planning Board, Frank Marinelli, pleased to appear on behalf of Marimar LLC, which is the Mar Company that will construct the proposed third Mar building at the sixteen acre, acre, sixteen acre commercial campus owned by Mar Scaffolding at two oh one Commerce Drive in the Commerce Industrial Park. Mar Scaffolding and its related companies have been serving the region for six generations, a hundred and twenty-seven years. And established in eighteen ninety-eight, Mar has played a major role in the Boston area development and in developing Boston skyline by providing high-quality steel and precast concrete erection services to fabricate and general, fabricators and general contractors. Mar has facilities, not only in Braintree, but the original facility in South Boston, and Springfield, and Canton, where they also have a Center for Safety Training in Canton. With me tonight is Mar C E O. and Chairman Dan Mar, and also here is B P. David Hughes and Chris Hughes of the Mar Companies. Also, our project civil engineer, Carlos of C E C. It's the same development team as the two prior Mar buildings, built and operating since two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two, respectively. Just by way of background, in two thousand nineteen, Mar received Planning Board approval, and that's Planning Board Decision eighteen dash sixteen, and they constructed the first one-story commercial building, a total of forty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty square feet, which includes very nice company offices in- very nice company offices. In 2022, Mar then constructed building number two, a 40,080 script foot, one-story commercial contractor building. And now Mar proposes building three, which is a smaller 30,000 square foot commercial contractor building, which will be used primarily for maintenance and repair of Mar aerial lifts. All three buildings are for contractor uses by right in the commercial zone, the Commerce Industrial Park. All three buildings are properly spaced out, as you can see on the site plan, on the large 16.1 acre site. The proposed building C is shown on the plans at the easterly end of the site toward the Grove Street entry to the industrial park. First building A is at the opposite end, the westerly end of the 16 acre site. And the second building B is almost in the middle of the site. As shown on Plan C200, the site layout, all buildings fit nicely. There's no dimensional or other variances. The new proposed building complies with all dimensional intensity requirements of the Braintree zoning ordinances. The existing two-building campus right now is currently assessed at over $12 million. The third building, 30,000 square feet, adds another 35% of building square footage with associated commercial tax base for the town of Braintree. The Mar improvements to the 16.1 acres have been welcome. Prior to the sale to Mar of the 16 acres in 2019, the property had been used as a storage lot for track machines, piled up rocks and debris, which many of us remember. The investment and the improvement made by Mar since its ownership in 2019 are extraordinary. Robert Perkins, 641 Summer Street of Waymouth is a director butter. His property is noted on sheet C200 of the plans. It's a large property just north of the Mar campus. Mr. Perkins submitted a letter of support talking about the construction of Mar buildings 1 and 2 and adding, quote, "All this work was a huge improvement to the area and is certainly an improvement to the property. Both buildings were built and completed without causing any problems for me or my property and are certainly enhancement to our area. I have reviewed the drawings for a proposed third building, and I fully support their adding an additional building to this site," end quote. To the point of improvements, you will note on Plan Sheets C700 and C701, the landscape plans, how Mar intends to beautify the corner of their property where building three will sit above the easterly end of Commerce Drive. The planting schedule on those plans show approximately 27 new trees and 205 new shrubs. So at this point, I will turn it over to Carlos Sculte, who is the project engineer to address the building three layout, stormwater, and our team is happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Carlos Sculte with CEC, the civil engineers on the project. So I think Frank, Frank already highlighted a lot of what the project is. So what we also prepared was a rendered landscape plan that captures the extent of where the majority of the development will be proposed. So what you see on the plans here is the landscaping that Attorney Marinelli just mentioned was, that was a big part of the development. If anybody's been up to the site, they know that the Mar Companies really treat their sites well. They maintain them well, and they want to make sure that it reflects the, the good name and the work that they do. So as part of that, one of the, the areas that is currently being used right now where the proposed building is located is basically just a lay-down area right now where there's gravel surfacing. And along the edge, it's a little bit overgrown vegetation as you enter into the Commerce Park, Industrial Park that you have there. So a big part of the project is going to be cleaning up that frontage there on that slope that goes up at a three-to-one slope to that level gravel area, which is about 10 to 15 feet higher than the street grade. So that landscape area, the shrub vegetation, the overgrown area will be cleared out. It'll be replanted with new landscaping, which mentioned before is a, a pretty robust landscape plan that has a mix of evergreens. It has a mix of deciduous trees, low-level shrubs and, and plantings as well to provide additional curb appeal for the entire industrial development as you drive in. So I think that's just a, a good highlight of what the proposed project is going to look like at the end of the day. And I can walk you through some of the plans and the overall design, some of the more technical things if, if we go slide by slide here. If we jump to that one again for context, Commerce Drive, this is one of the first development sites on the right-hand side as you drive into the industrial park. Let me go to the next slide. This is the existing condition and the demolition plan. So you can see what's there today before the building would be located. So the entire site was previously permitted for phase two to install a level gravel area, which was analyzed and designed as a fully impervious surface, as if it were pavement, for any sort of future concessions for the stormwater management design and the layout and the evaluation of the development. What you also have along the east side of the site, which is a Page North site, is that there is a existing locally regulated wetland there that was subject to enhancements and restoration that was expanded as part of the previous developments. Recently, in front of the Conservation Commission, a certificate of compliance for all the work for the previous development was submitted and was issued by the Conservation Commission as well, essentially confirming that everything's been working well, the mitigation and the restoration for that wetland has been completed, and everything looks like it's in good shape. All the previous construction certificates of compliance for the design and the installation of the stormwater management system, everything was done and all the previous approvals and the certificates of compliance were issued as well. So fully permitted, the site's been functioning well from a traffic standpoint, from a stormwater management standpoint, and by all accounts, has been a good addition to the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So again, this is the proposed development. So the proposed building is at the very southerly end of the site there, primarily located within the existing gravel upland that was created. And we are respecting an existing transmission power line that runs through the site as well. So as part of the previous development and the permitting, working with the power company to make sure that what's being proposed is consistent with their regulations and works also within the constraints that we have for that power easement. The building is located outside of that, and as mentioned earlier, fully compliant with the setbacks, open space, dimensional criteria for the proposed building, as well as the overall building height. We ran average grade plan calculations just to confirm that, because the topography does change a little bit as you go around the building, and it is compliant with the, the height regulations for this particular district. Next slide, please. So this is the overall grading plan. Not really proposing a lot of modifications to the grading, grading for the development. The, the gravel area was already fairly level with mild slopes, so just some minor grading to make sure that the finished floors and the entrances into and out of the building work. And then a small expansion of the level area at the very southerly end, the Page Right portion of the site, just providing a little bit extra space for maneuvering there and, and a retaining wall there to be able to hold that back. And then there is an existing residence at the very southerly end of the site, the Page Right site that's been there, and no modifications to that. That's just remaining as is. Next slide. So this is the stormwater management system. So no real material changes to the stormwater management for the site. As I mentioned earlier, the previous phase-two development accounted for all of this area to already be fully impervious. So the stormwater management system took into account any sort of potential future changes there from a very conservative approach. So the stormwater management size, the number of chambers, as well as water quality storage and the recharge storage, TSS removal, all those already account for impervious areas here. So there is a small increase by about 7,000 square feet of impervious on the site, mostly due to the nature of how the, the proposed building is located. So with that, there's minor modifications to the outlet control structures for the stormwater management systems, just to make sure that the water quality within those systems is consistent with the previous approvals. And then from a utility standpoint, there are utilities available within Commerce as well as within the previous developments. So for the water system, we're looking to tie into the existing infrastructure that's already on-site. Everything's working fine, it's working well. It's very low intensity use for this particular development, so not a lot of demand on the water system. From a sanitary sewer standpoint, there would be a new sewer service that would be proposed from the building running down to Commerce. And from a electric and telecommunications standpoint, also tying into existing transformers and underground electric infrastructure located along the frontage as well. And I will note one additional change. Where we're tying into the sewer system, we are proposing to pull back the island in Commerce there of a few feet to better allow for circulation from the site. Right now, there's two entrances. The most northerly one, which is on the Page Left side, is a two-way in and out entrance with full turning movements in any direction. We are proposing the southerly entrance into and out of the site, which is a right-in, but also only a right-out currently. We'd like to be able to pull back that island to be able to allow left-turn movements for the trucks and vehicles leaving that site to function a little bit better at that entrance. We are proposing to pull back the island there as well. Next slide, please. This is the landscape plan. As mentioned earlier, and we showed on the first slide, we are proposing a pretty robust landscape plan along the frontage to really help improve the curb appeal for the industrial development as you come into the site. Next slide, please. And if we go through to the architecture plans, it should be about three slides to the future. This would be a pre-manufactured engineering structure, so traditional look, similar to look to the other buildings that are currently on the site. Working with the architecture team of Chu and Company, they've included buildings showing elevations as well as the overall look at the building. It is an industrial, it is a warehouse development, so it would be consistent with the other look of the buildings on the site. And if we quickly run through these, shows the floor plan of the proposed building, a consistent use of what would be currently used on the site, also working well with the, the company's goals and the continued use of the site. A small mezzanine level located within the building as well to allow for some additional storage and use on a mezzanine level located inside the building, so just kind of an elevated platform there in some areas. And then we have some elevations showing the various facades of the building. There will be a sloping roof, so it'll be sloping from one side to the other. The high side would be away from the power lines, and the lower side would be to the side of the building that's closer to the power lines. So the maximum height, again, with that is fully zoning compliant with the town's regulations. So with that, I open it up to the planning department and the board if you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go on. Add anything to your staff report?
No, I, I think, I think the staff report speaks for itself.
Okay, great. Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here on the 201 Commerce Drive, 600 Grove Street application? All right. Turn it over to Board Comments. Member McCamey?
Thank you. I'm happy to see Mr. Sculte is involved in at least one successful project tonight. So he won for two. And I think Mr. Marinelli was correct in reading that letter of recommendation. That was a very strong letter when I read it earlier, and it, it, that happens very rarely, as Mr. Marinelli knows. Just, just a, you know, when this, when this project was first passed, I was involved, and my concern was, you know, the traffic. And honestly, I don't think we've really had any problems. I've been in front of the trucks and back of the trucks. I, we haven't heard any problems. I think it's, the Mar Companies have been very successful, so we thank them for that. I just wish that they knew something about road construction and help us finish the road area over there. It's horrible. But anyway, a couple of quick questions. Will this be the last building that gets built on this piece of property?
You know, I think the zoning table, Carlos can speak to it, but it's certain, I don't think it's at capacity in terms of some of the dimensional and density regulations. But Carlos could speak to that, and Dan can speak to it as to any future plans.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Director, Board Members. I'm Dan Mar. I'm the CEO of the Mar Companies. In response to that last question, which is a good question, at the time of the acquisition back in 2019, right at the onset, we planned on a three-building facility. And at this, it's happened a little bit more quickly than we thought. Right out of the gate in 2019, we embarked on building number one. And then 10 months later, we embarked on the process for building number two. And I think that what we had scheduled was an introduction of three buildings over a six-to-eight-year span, so a little bit ahead of that pace. But the direct answer to the question is that this time, there is no plans beyond the three, that are, or this third, phase three, which we're looking for, you know, your approval for this evening.
While I have you up there, sir, do you host clients at the, at your, at your site here, or is it just primarily members of your workforce?
Members of the workforce. There has been on a rare occasion, we'll have in, you know, a client to sit in the conference room to make a presentation about our product services, sometimes to a specific project. But that's a limited group of it, maybe a dozen people at the most. And that's only very occasionally.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other question. I, I don't think you, well, you might be able to answer it, but I'll ask it anyway. So I noticed that there was a traffic report, and we're going to have some additional, you know, new vehicle trips. My question is, are those passenger cars, or are those, you know, cranes, or a combination of the two?
There will be some, some trucks, but not largely over what we already see. You know, we're very concerned as, it was very clear to us back in 2019 and 2020, that traffic was going to be a concern, and we've worked very hard. I was delighted to hear your comments about seeing that we have managed it well, because we've worked very hard at that, and we certainly will continue to do that going forward.
Well, we appreciate that. Yeah, I haven't, I haven't heard, we would have heard things if, if they were.
I'm glad you've heard nothing.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything. But thank you very much, and we appreciate you doing business in town.
Totally. Our pleasure to be a member of the Braintree community.
Thank you.
128 years in South Boston, and now we've been embraced by Braintree, but we're embracing back. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Madam Chair.
Member Ken?
Just one question, and that would be, it was referred to about the, the construction going on near the entrance to the Industrial Park. Would that impair the schedule for construction of this building? It seems to have been ongoing here for the entire summer plus. Is that going to be wrapped up, and would that impact the, the time here?
Do you know what I hear about that project? It looks like it's progressing, right? Is it, I don't know what it is.
I'm, I'm not sure what they were doing, but it's, it's been, you know, it's been quite a while if you try to take the left on Grove Street.
Oh, we have, we can access the site for construction and, and do it from the other end, but I, I don't think it interferes. I've, I've driven, I've driven in there with no problem.
Okay. So?
Member comments?
My questions are asked. Thank you.
Member Ken?
No comments.
I did learn to operate Lyft though at your South Boston place maybe about a decade ago. So it's kind of cool to see it come full circle.
Come back and Lyft age you.
Yeah, probably need it.
Member Ken, yeah?
Nothing else.
Thank you. My only question, it looks like from the aerial, there's a lot of trucks or other storage containers on that parking lot area where the building's going to go. Is there a plan for where those items will go?
Yeah, I, I think the, the easy answer is the, the one that'll have to happen, right? There, there just won't be enough space to be able to store that. So as part of the previous permitting, the, the Mar Companies were using some of that for lay-down, a storage of their equipment and whatnot. And now some of that will move inside the building, and there just won't be that amount of space to store it outside. So they'll just have to reduce that aspect of the project.
Okay. And then the residence that's on there, I, I assume, because it's part of the property, that Mar Companies controls it and can control any construction aspects?
Yeah, so that, I think they're using it right now just for some of their employees just to have a, a place to, to stay if needed. just to have a place to stay if needed, but that was an existing condition of the site, and it's just continued, and they're just maintaining it as it currently is. Yeah.
All right. I don't have any other questions. Director, do you have anything to add based on that?
I have nothing to add, nope. I think it's, the applicant speaks for herself, and I think we touched on all valid points.
All right, thank you. So we have the staff report, we don't have a draft decision yet. We could do sort of one of two things. I'll see what the board has any comments. We could essentially close it out tonight and then have a subsequent meeting in November with a draft decision and go over it then, or we could just continue it and keep it open until November and essentially do the same thing, just if there's any additional information that comes in. I guess the last, do you have any preference, one way or another?
I think we're content to close the public hearing and go to draft conditions if that's the board's intent, that would be fine.
All right. And are there any? Right, November 12th, right? That's what we talked about earlier, yes. Any questions, comments with that? Okay. All right, so then, so what we'll do next is have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved?
Motion by Member Ken, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we will do a motion to essentially approve the major modifications subject to a decision to be drafted and voted upon November 12th.
So moved.
With a motion by Member Ken, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. And then, of course, you two can talk if there's any questions on the conditions before November.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Next, we are on to our continued public hearings. The first of the continued public hearings is 29 Messina Drive, Planning Board File 2505. I see we have the applicant here. Thank you.
This is Rashmi and Jennifer.
Oh, I'm sorry, could you just introduce yourself one more time? I don't think the microphone is going yet.
Oh. Good evening, my name is Ting Ting. This is Rashmi, she's the architect, and then Jennifer, she's the designer. So we've been working with Director Machad and Anita since the last public hearing, so we do have a copy of the draft decision, and we reviewed the draft decision. I think everything looks good on our end, so, right. So that, right, so, yeah, I think the draft decision looks great on our end, so if there's any question, we can answer questions tonight.
Okay, thank you. I know that I saw it, I don't think I have a hard copy. Do either of you have a hard copy of the draft decision? An extra one? I don't want to take yours if you need to reference it. Thank you. All right, and let's see. Assistant Director, do you want to go over some of the, or I'm not sure which of you would be more?
I'll let Anita go over.
Okay.
Anita was the one that worked on this, but I will state, obviously, since the last meeting, we've worked with Ting Ting on this application and to draft a decision. In drafting the decision, we reached out to the dog officer here in Braintree, we had a conversation with him. We sent actually the decision over to the dog officer, we didn't really hear a response, but we really tried to reach out to all folks that would have a knowledge and a need to review this decision as it kind of got put together. So I can let Anita speak to the decision and some of the items that we did, how we kind of brought together the draft conditions.
Good evening. So in the draft decision, there are, under the condition, there are three sections. The first section is the special conditions, which were draft based on different regulations of surrounding municipalities, state law, and some proposed, from the materials from the applicant's proposal, just on like dog capacity, some of the requirements for health and safety standards, et cetera. And then the second section is called the other town department conditions, which are comments from the departments of the public works, some of their concerns and some of their conditions that they shared with us, so they're in there. And lastly, the general conditions are just really the typical conditions that the planning board applies to the special permits. Yeah, so...
All right. Great, thank you. And I know there was a question of the overnight boarding. We had, the draft decision had 30, and I think the applicant was asking for more than that. Can you sort of describe what you're asking for and how that would work?
Right, so we reached out to Midmark. Midmark is the company that creates kennels. So we asked them to give us a quote, and then we sent them the site plan, and then that's the one they sent back to us. So I think this one, those are the collapsible kennels, because that area in the daytime is like a daycare area. But I think, well, because Midmark does this, this is what they do for a living, I think they were just trying to keep up with the capacity. So I think they counted 45 kennels, because some of them are stackable, so for smaller dogs, you can stack two together, and some of them are single. So, but in general, we're not going to reach fully capacity every day. Usually, it would be about 50% capacity, so if they quote us 44, 45, we're probably going to have about 20 dogs for overnight boarding. So that's just the number that they send us, and because they're the expert in the industry, so, you know, I use that as a reference.
And the kennels that are there, are they for any size dog? Are there going to be specific ones for larger dogs, smaller dogs?
Yes, so in this room, all of the kennels are the same size, but let me see. In room 106, and you can see the stackable ones, and then the large ones. So from what I, they sent me, there's the 3D print, and you can see the stackable ones, and let me see.
Sorry, if you guys just go back to the microphone thing.
So to the right of the picture are the stackable ones for the smaller dogs, and to the left are the bigger ones for the larger dogs.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And for overnight, if you could remind me of what your sort of daytime regular hours are, sort of separate from the overnight question, please.
Yeah, so the daytime hours are 6:30 a.m. to 7:30 p.m., and then the overnight starts from there.
All right. Member McComey, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you. In terms of the overnight, my opinion is I think we start slow. You've never done this before, we've never done this before, you know, I don't think we need to max it out. I don't know what the right number is. I certainly don't think it's any more than 30, maybe it's 20, I don't know, but that would be my suggestion, start off slow. My other comment is that I sent the director today some information. Apparently, almost every single city and town which allows, you know, doggy daycare, overnighting, they also have special permit fees, which are not tremendously onerous, and I noticed, noted that some of them are based on the size of the dog as well, and, you know, the number of dogs. And I think that we need to investigate that. I don't know if we make it part of a condition, but I think we should, and I'm not exactly sure, is it the licensing board, is it, you know, the Board of Health? You know, I guess it could be us, but, you know, since we do charge some fees for some things, but if everybody else is doing it, and again, it didn't seem like a huge number, I think we should consider it as well.
So when we did the research, we looked into Boston, Randolph, and Weymouth. We did not come across the pet fee one there, you know, because I read through all of the ordinances in these three different places, so I'm not sure which section this would be under.
There's a number of other cities and towns, and again, I don't have it in front of me. I don't know who does it, I think it would be a good idea for us. There's going to be additional work involved from whoever inspects you, and I think that was the key thing, you know, inspection and making sure that, you know, the animals are well-cared for. And apparently, the State Department of Agriculture is going to issue some new additional guidelines next year, that's what I read. But I don't know, I saw a number of cities and towns that are doing it, and, you know, the departments here, they're working pretty hard. And again, I didn't think that the fees were that large, but I think that it helps just to offset some of the additional costs, because there will be additional, you know, time and energy spent on this.
Right, I think the animal inspection fee is pretty, or animal inspector is pretty common in every single town. I just haven't came across the pet fee.
I don't know what they call it, there's a variety of things. I'm just saying that we should look into it and make a decision what's best for us.
Okay.
So I would like that to be included somehow. Again, if most of the other cities and towns are doing this, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Director?
Just to make a point, I did take a look at the website that Member McCone, Member McCone gave us, and I did print out a copy of that website, and I kind of handed it to our chair. And so, looking at the website, when I look at it, it says a kennel licensing fee, so I think it's a kennel licensing fee, which I think would be standardly issued through a licensing board. That's an annual fee. And so the town of Bauxford, for example, has a kennel licensing fee of $125. The town of Free Town, depending on the size of the dogs, has a licensing fee ranging from $60 for small dogs to large dogs at $160. And so no fee is, no fee goes above $200, which would be the town of Charlton, which would have 26 large dogs, and that would be a fee of $26. So there is a fee involved, and as we kind of look at this, across the towns that were provided on the website. So just to kind of add some additional information to Member McCone.
All right, thank you. Member Ken?
No questions.
Member Conley?
Thank you, I had a question for staff. How was the staffing ratio for this project set up? Is it best practices or some other information?
Yeah, so the staff ratio is one per 15 dog, and that includes overnight boarding as well. So that's daytime and overnight.
How was that number reached? Like, how did you establish that as the appropriate ratio?
That is industrial standard, yeah.
That's helpful, thank you. I also appreciate that the plan was in there and for evacuation of the animals. Did your team update your exterior elevation?
So we were supposed to submit an updated package in 30 days, and hoping to get some finishes and that, in the middle of getting, or finalizing the finishes. She gave it to you in the submitting package.
Okay. Thank you. Member Ken?
Go further, questions.
Member Kenahan?
Just one question, the 30 dogs overnight. I just want to be sure that you recognize that you can't at any point have more than 30 dogs overnight with this drafted decision.
When she mentioned Midmark, which is the kenneling services that kind of drafts the layout for the kennels, she wasn't necessarily saying that she's, she is okay with the 30 capacity, essentially, especially because it's going to fit with the 1 to 15 ratio. She's going to have to have two people staffed overnight anyways, so we're totally fine starting slow in terms of the kenneling services.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I'm not sure if it's in there, but maybe one thing we could also add is one of the minor modification provisions, that if, you know, after they're open for business, if they think it's appropriate to come in and ask for additional overnight, we can consider how it's been going and look at it then, too. Maybe we add something like that?
Okay, sure.
And Member McComey's point, I do see the logic in the fee. I'm sort of wondering if that would be more of the licensing board than us, something to sort of, as we're starting to think about these new businesses in town, whatever they have and don't have, would be my thought. I don't know if I asked if there's anybody here on 29 Messina? Yes. All right, applicants, if you could just give, we're going to have some public comment come up, if you could give your name and address.
Hello, my name is Liz Page. I live at 137 St. Zav. And I think there is definitely a need for this business in town. I do have some questions, though, through the board. I don't understand what the cost is for a different special permit fees based on the size of the dog. Can someone explain that to me?
Not sure I understand the question, so the planning board fees, is that what you're asking about?
Yes.
It's just the special permit fee.
Oh, so it's a one-time fee?
Yes, I think, are you, so the discussion we were having tonight was whether or not there should be some sort of licensing fee that goes to the town, separate from the special, separate from the application that brought them here tonight.
And that would be a fee charged to the business?
Right.
Okay. And is there an outside area, a kennel run for this? I didn't see the previous one.
There is, yes. Sorry, if the applicant could come back up, I don't know if you can, if that's on the electronic program that you have there.
So this is the draft permit, so the outside area is about 2,800 square feet.
Sorry, just to make sure that you're talking into the microphone also.
Right, so the inside area is about 6,200 square feet, and the outside area is about 2,800 square feet, and then we're going to change that into the canneled grass and then chop it into three yards. So the dogs will be separated.
Okay.
Yes, that's just the kennel, that's not the outside picture.
Okay. So the dogs will have separate play yards to play in?
Yeah, because they have to be separated by their temperament.
Right, right.
So there will be three yards for three sections.
So will, through the chair, will there be people outside supervising?
Yeah.
As well as people inside supervising?
Yes, yes. So as long as there's a playgroup, and there will be at least one staff member, so we're still go by the one staff member per 15-dog ratio. So if we have 15 dogs out there, so there will be at least one person out there with a dog, but if we have 16 dogs out there, then we'll have probably two people out there with the dogs.
But what if you, what if there are just five dogs outside and five dogs in?
Right, then we'll have one person inside, one person outside. So it will be one person, at least one person stay with the dogs, even if it's just one dog outside, there will still be a person staying with the dog.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here on 29? All right, is there anyone else here on 29 Messina Ave Drive? All right, so with that, I would be looking, are there any other comments or questions from Board members? No, all right. That I'd be looking to, oh, we have one more, sorry. Come on up, just give your name and address.
Hi, my name is Vali Weeks. I'm at 1265 Washington Street in Braintree. I had mouth surgery today, so I apologize for my wobbliness. So you're looking at the size of the dog. So I have a 100-pound Old English Bulldog that just lays there and pretty much does nothing. And I would love to board her in a place like this, so I could go away. And I think this would be a great facility to, you know, to have her go to. And I also have another dog that's 57 pounds, so I don't know what the size limit is, but I think you need to look at the breeds of the dogs and the size of the dogs, and you know, what this facility is capable of. But I think this is an amazing facility that is very needed in our area. You know, we're a very dog-friendly neighborhood, and everybody in my neighborhood has, you know, some form of dog, whether it's smaller or larger. So I think this really needs to be, you know, advocated for.
Great, thank you. And just for background also, we have had a few hearings on this, so it's not that we haven't talked about some of these things, it's just that it's been at prior meetings also, so.
Yeah, so I can answer that question. So we did talk about that last time. It's not the size or the weight of the dogs, it's the personality and the temperament. And we do have a policy, if the dog is involved in a dog fight, because this could happen, what do we do after, right? So we would inform the owner, and if that happens two, three times, then we're probably not going to take the dog, because we don't want to jeopardize our employee and other dogs, and have further, you know, bigger problems that we need to deal with. So, because some of the big dogs, even their 100 pounds, they're very gentle. Some of the dogs, even they're small, but they're feisty, so it really depends on the personality.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, you're looking for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by Member Kent, do we have a second? Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then we'll just be looking for a motion to grant special permit and site plan review according to the draft conditions, as we discussed tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Member Kane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. Best of luck to you getting it the rest of the way. The next item we have on the agenda is 55 King Hill Road, are they? Okay.
But that's going to be continued to November 12th as well. That came from the applicant's attorney this after, this morning.
Okay, great, all right. So we're looking for a motion to continue to November 12th.
Motion.
We're not approving, we're continuing.
Motion to move?
To move.
We're going to, all right, so. Member Kane inadvertently made a motion to continue to November 12th. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thank you. All right, last item is the 10 Plain Street application, Planning Board file 2506.
Madam Chair, can we take a brief recess?
Yeah, yep, perfect, all right. And just while you get set up, we're going to take just a five-minute recess, come back at 8:38, according to my watch, which is different from up there. In the middle of the meeting, yeah. I was looking at myself, and I said, well, no, but now I have two.
Oh.
All right, we will jump back into it. All right, so we're just starting the continued public hearing for 10 Plain Street. Attorney Marinelli, go ahead and.
Chair Crow, members of the Planning Board, Frank Marinelli, pleased to be back before the Board on behalf of Trammell Crow Residential. With me this evening from Trammell Crow is Mark Baransky, who you've met previously, and also Emily White. And we also have our Civil Engineer, Nick Delacava, from Allen Major, and our Traffic Engineer, Andy Arsenal, from MDM Transportation. And Steve, most importantly, Steve Shelter from Bergman, who is the architect on the project. And we've made substantial progress on architecture since the September 9th meeting. We had a work session with the Planning Department on September 25th. So anxious to show some of that, just in case this is somebody joining for the first time, seeing the project. It's 752 Luxury Class A Apartment Homes. Trammell Crow has developed nationwide approximately 300,000 quality residences. This site is a 30-acre site, the former Armstrong property. And when Trammell redevelops it, we will have well over 50% open space, approximately 58% open space, and a $230 million, over $230 million investment in Braintree. And the property has significant natural features that we showed on August 12th at the hearing, with the video of the River Walk, which is a tremendous public amenity, and the vegetation. So we're preserving many of the original mature trees. We have presented in the prior hearings the fact that the town of Braintree, the Town Council, created a 127-acre Red Line South District, whose purpose is to allow multifamily housing by right. And so, it's a site plan review process. The project does not require a single variance. All plans and materials for the residential development are available on the public website, Planning Board's website online, under current applications. You're familiar with the site. Easterly, it's boarded by the commuter rail tracks and Mahar Highway, southerly by Plain Street, and westerly, again, by commuter rail tracks and Hancock Street. Armstrong vacated the site approximately 30 years ago. The Registry of Motor Vehicles now, in anticipation of the redevelopment, has relocated, we heard that earlier. Bay Shore Gym will be relocating probably by February. So you're familiar with the before and after photos of what is being created here with a site that basically cries out for redevelopment, and we're fortunate to have the experience and the ability of Trammell Crow to redevelop what was a, has been a complex site that a couple of developers have touched but not been able to make a startup over the past 30 years. So the site continued with just the registry and the Bay Shore Gym. All existing buildings and structures will be demolished, and the public amenity is an easement over Trammell Crow, currently Messina property. We will be adding an additional walking trail that you've seen previously. Phase 1 is the 427 residences that are shown in blue, and that's Buildings 1A, 1B, 2, 3, and 4. On September 9th, and again, at the work session on September 25th, there was requests for Steve, our architect, to consider dividing that longer building, Building 4, and we have now divided that into two smaller buildings. Also, he took the long edifice on Phase 2. Phase 2 is shown in the rose color there, and that's 325 residential apartments, apartment homes. And we took that long easterly edifice and created a view corridor into the courtyard. So those were a couple of the changes that were made to the buildings. Tonight, I know that Greg Lucas, who's the peer reviewer on traffic, is here and will present. The rounds of comments on traffic have started, like, with a July submission by MDM, and then I think Greg Lucas's, Ty and Bond's response was in August, and a lot of comments that were then addressed by MDM again in October in their responses. And just this week, the further response of Ty and Bond was presented in terms of a resolution letter. So I think that outside of some site layout, circulation, and the question about reserved parking is one that we felt we were asked very early on to do some reserved parking instead of doing more asphalt, try to boost the already 58% of open space. And so, there are some reserved parking spaces, which bring the 1.5 per apartment home to a little less, but totally manageable. For example, Waymouth Landing has .8 parking spaces per apartment home. This is almost twice as much, and so it works even with a reserve, but we'll let Greg and Andy talk about that. There's really not much more on closing out traffic and being able to frame some reasonable conditions. The other items that came up were, of course, there was comment, and a lot of comment on architecture, and you're going to see tonight with Steve's presentation, that the incorporation of all-new residential elements of gables, sloping roof lines, dormers, window molding, brick cladding, balconies, other architectural features. We feel that we've made immense progress toward the final design and architecture. The other items that came out of the work session, as I said, Building 4 is now divided. Building 5 has a view corridor. Secondly, the building architecture changed from flat roof to design to residential gable design, as in many of the, many of the sections of the building. Thirdly, we show the prototype of the bridge with ornamental lights, rails lighting under the bridge, Mark or Steve will highlight. Fourth, we show on the plan's internal traffic and circulation controls, which were requested. An onsite central bus location, school bus location, stop sign, roundabout, parking adjustment at Mahar Ingress and Egress, we increased the queuing there, and there's a raised speed table. Fifth, the area off of Plain Street where food trucks had been mentioned is now replaced and improved with a more permanent and welcoming playground use. We heard significant comments on that, and that will be open to the public. And we believe that it provides families with a known and a consistent venue to come and enjoy, along with the nearby River Walk and Fish Ladder. All of that works together. The idea of a playground was requested, and it fits with the passive recreational use of the River Walk, the Fish Ladder, and the 58% open space. Sixth, onsite, we were requested to identify additional resident children play areas, and we've done that in a 5,000-square-foot area, 4,000-square-foot area, and a 1,000-square-foot area, plus there are eight recreational courtyards with open space. So we have some peer reviews that are outstanding, but we really want to close in on trying to get those peer reviews in and get the conditions that come out of those peer reviews finalized, so we can hopefully have the peer, all of the peer reviews, water, sewer, civil, and fiscal, are the ones that we're waiting for, and hopefully we'll have those by the November 12th meeting, and then be able to work with staff on reasonable conditions. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to give Mark an opportunity to address the Board.
For the record, Mark Baransky, Trammell Crow Residential. Good evening, and thank you for your time, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and members of the Planning Department. I'm going to just make a brief comment, and to sort of kick off the presentation by our architect. I think there was a takeaway through the course of the first couple meetings with regard to the architecture, that it wasn't quite on point, that it might be missing some of the context of both the town and the site, as well as more sort of granular comments on how massing could be broken up to create a more of a, you know, village or New England type of environment. We took those comments to heart, again, in the course of our meeting with the Planning Department. I think we've incorporated them, new elements that Counselor Marinelli has mentioned, and certainly playing with the massing to be responsive. We're very excited. The site plan approval process is a collaborative process inherently, and it requires give and take, and we think that we're able to really hear the feedback from the Planning Board, some members of the Board itself, and also frankly, from the public, to respond to a project that we think is the better for it. So with that, I'll hand it over to our architect.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. As both Frank and Mark mentioned, there are a couple of planning changes that we made in the site plan of the project. One was to divide Building 4 into two buildings, two smaller buildings, and the other was to make some significant changes to Building 5 in a way that broke up the long facades of that building, and to make those in complement to the scale of the other buildings on the site. In addition to that, we'll go through the architectural revisions. As Mark mentioned, we took that to heart. Building 4 was, is, was 108 units, and we broke it into two. The south- The south building contains 56 units, Building 4A. Building 4A B to the north contains 52 units. And we relocated the amenity space to the gap between the buildings. At its nearest point, the gap is about 25 feet between the buildings, and about 45, 48 feet along the riverside of the building. For Building 5, as was mentioned before, we've, we've opened the east courtyard all the way to the street, basically cut through the corridor system and moved the entrance into that gap, so that people will get to see that courtyard. And then along the west facade, we cut a deep recess into that facade, again, to break the west facade and, and to basically two, two lengths that are more or less in complement to the proposed buildings, just directly west across the street. Moving to the architecture, you can see a comparison of where we were a month ago with flat roofs, and how we've changed the project and the image of the project, employing gabled roofs and dormers. In the facade, looking at it in a little more detail, we've used color in the same way to highlight the facades. And the, this building, Building 1A, the closest to Plain Street, has the amenity space for Phase 1 for, and that is represented on the brick, the first story brick on this corner. And then we have a projecting canopy on the south and east facades, and, or south and west facades. And that's now column-supported, giving it more of a porch-like feel, residential porch-like Looking at the building, this is above Plain Street, more or less where the old, where we had previously proposed the food trucks, and are now proposing a playlot. This facade, again, we're using color. We've added balconies along this elevation to activate the facade. You can see the use of the dormers and the gable ends on the building. And we've introduced brick at the first story on the west elevation of the building as Looking at the same building from the riverside, you can see the introduction of gables and balconies, and the use of color to highlight the building, and to break up the roof line substantially and give it a much more residential impression. This slide compares where we were again a month ago with the flat roofs and the streetscape. This is more or less from the roundabout on the south end of the site. On the left are Buildings 1B and 2 in the background, and on the right is Building 5. So you can see, again, with this language that we've employed, that it's substantially transformed the look of the project and the look of the neighborhood of buildings that we're trying to, to construct here. Moving to Building 4, again, utilizing that same language, you can see the gap between the buildings and the way that color is used, again, to note and highlight areas, the introduction of brick at the amenity space, and the residential style canopies. And, and this building, we put gabled roofs over the balconies along the riverside of the project, again, breaking the roof line and changing the, the aesthetics of the project. This is going to be carried out through all of the buildings on the project. Further north up towards the Fish Ladder, looking back at Building 4B, the Northerly Building, again, the extensive use of balconies and color to activate and enrich the look of the building. Lastly, Building 5, the largest of the buildings. This is the view, new and old, from Mahar Highway. And you can see here that we've introduced brick, substantial amount of brick on the corner of the building, and changed the roof lines, again, utilizing the dormers and bays and gables to activate the facade. So we think this is substantially improved in terms of the impression, first impression of the project. As we move, we, we talked about the break in the facade. This is the location of the break of the facade and the main building entrance. We've moved the entrance around into the gap you can see fully into, into the east courtyard. And one of the things that doing these breaks and recesses on the building allows us to realize the gables and dormers, and so for those to be fully seen from the street and give the impression of separate buildings. You can see gabled bays along the facade as well, as, as part of the aesthetic. And then the introduction around the entrance of, again, brick, two stories on each side of, of the building on this, at this location. And then above the rotary, the roundabout, again, looking up the street, same language, again, is employed, and bay, bays, and gables, and balconies, and pitched roof lines to activate, and really provided dynamic impression on this building. This is the recessed entrance on the west. This is opposite Buildings 1B and 2, and the driveway in between. This recess is about 30 feet deep, full unit depth. And again, you can, the, the carving out of the facade allows you to see the sides of these buildings and, and appreciate the changed roof lines. So as architects, we feel quite good. We're quite happy with the way the design is involved, and we really appreciate the input that the town, the community has given us, and that the planning board has given us, and we think that it's a significantly improved project as a result of it, and we trust that you will agree.
Great.
So I think that Greg, the peer review on traffic, probably has some time that you want allotted to that, and our traffic engineer, Andy, is here. So if there's any questions, we're happy to address those as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Lucas, I think you're, the last is your response to their traffic updates, correct?
What's that?
It is, yeah, okay. Yeah, the most recent thing is your, the most recent report is your response to the applicant, correct?
Right. We had, we had originally issued a review letter back in August that had a number of comments, primarily on the, their traffic study prepared by MDM, but also some onsite access and circulation. And so the responses that we received last week from MDM largely addressed a lot of our comments. We had comments related to additional study area, related to trip distribution, and those things we feel have been primarily satisfactorily answered. We have a few outstanding comments that we expect that we'll address. And really what was left over was the site comments. We haven't seen the new site plan. We got some description of improvements in the responses from MDM, but we haven't seen that to fully vet it out. The largest of those comments was related to the driveway at Mahar Highway, and the idea of moving the reserved spaces there to give kind of a longer driveway approach and more queue storage. And while we understand and generally agree with the idea of having the reserved parking and having a lower parking ratio, the 1.5, we want to see some, some numbers and some data to support that, to support that that's the right parking ratio and the right approach, that it's not something where they're going to put reserved spaces and then determine, you know, in six months that they need those when they're fully occupied. So we want to make sure to kind of prove that and vet that out for the sake of the board's review.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. And thanks for turning around your review of their materials so quickly also. I appreciate that. As well, while we're discussing with you, are there any board members that have comments or questions on the traffic status? Member McCowme?
Sure. Thank you. What kind of queuing are we going to have? Let me just back up. At the last meeting, I believe that, that John Mahar is going to be the only entrance and egress for the initial phases of the project.
Opposite. Plain Street, Plain Street will be the only access at, for the initial project. If you think about the site plan and how it's separated, Phase 1 is the four buildings closer to Plain Street, closer to Hancock Street, and Phase 2 is the larger building, Building 5, that's closer to Mahar Highway.
Okay, so on Plain Street. And then you're going to, you're going to move the curb cut back, I understand, right?
It, it is moved back. I mean, I would let the applicant answer those questions, but I can confirm it is, it is moved back from the intersection. There's more queue storage before you encounter the driveway.
It's already moved back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For, for the record, Andrew Rausnold, MDM, business address 28 Lord Road in Marlboro. Correct. It will be moved back, proposed probably about 100 feet from its current location east on Plain Street, and then the one on John Mahar will be around, in the approximate location, about 25 feet north.
Yeah, okay. So, but let's focus on Plain Street, because that's going to be the only entrance and exit to start off with, right?
For Phase 1, correct.
Right, okay. So you're going to move it back. I looked at it the other day. And we're going to have two lanes? We're going to have one go right and one go left?
That is the idea.
Okay. And what, what is the queuing then going to be for?
Relatively, up to two cars.
Two cars?
Up to two cars. Two, three cars, yeah.
Okay. I want to see how that works.
For the, for the driveway, exiting the driveway.
Yeah, for exiting the driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Two or three cars going both directions, okay. And I believe I asked this last time, but I'm going to ask it again. What other major, let's just focus on, on the, on the lights. Are we making any changes to the timing of any lights at any intersection nearby?
Yes. Plain Street at Hancock and Washington?
Right.
We're going to optimize that timing. We're also going to do, as Greg pointed out in his first peer review, we're going to look at the detection, see if we can improve that along the way out there. But it's limited to that Plain Street of Washington and Hancock intersection.
Okay, so nothing, nothing on Mahar?
We didn't find anything on Mahar.
Okay. Because today, obviously, we don't, we don't have any left or right-hand turn signals in either direction, so, you know, it's kind of a free-for-all. There's been several accidents there, you're heading out or coming in. So, so we're not going to change anything with the lights at that intersection?
There's no plans for that right now, no.
Okay. And so Plain Street is going to be the only area that we're going to do something?
That was the only place that we found some deficiencies.
And what are we going to do about traffic calming on Mahar? What are, what are plans to, you know, improve, improve things there?
So specifically on Mahar, we were proposing two radar feed, speed feedback signs, the posted speed limit with the digital, your speed. Each direction at the police officers, at the police department's discretion of where they specifically want to locate that, probably proximate to, to our site driveway. But again, we'll leave that up to the police to, to determine the most appropriate location for those. And they will be, they will have data recording capabilities so that the police can target specific times, excuse me. If there's speeders that start at 3:45 repeatedly throughout the week, the police officers can then allocate officers to target those times for enforcement.
Okay. And, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer, but can you give us some idea in simple terms of how these things impact the traffic flow?
They generally, you find reductions in speed of around five to eight miles per hour. Nothing's perfect, but that's generally what we find in that ballpark.
And, and I'm sure as many of the residents know, we have a lot of these that have been put up in recent years, and, you know, school zones or high-impact areas.
Sure.
Right.
Yes.
So five to eight?
As a ballpark number, yeah.
Okay. And where do you have concerns about traffic volume? Any pinch points, any, any areas that you've, that you've researched, either of you have come up with?
We really haven't seen any, just the Hancock, Washington, and Plain intersection. We did notice that under existing conditions in the morning, there is some delays out there that we can improve with, with an optimized signal timing plan. So that's what we're willing to do, the proponents willing to do, to improve that intersection for all users. But we did not, nothing else specifically called out as a sort of alarming or a concern for operations or safety.
Okay. Well, we haven't seen the increased volume yet, so, but that's what you're anticipating. Okay.
That's, that's what we're anticipating based on our projections, correct?
Okay. There's a lot of concerned people out there, particularly on Mahar. That's, that's what I've heard mostly from people. So, okay. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Number Kent?
A couple of questions.
My apologies.
Yeah, I, I believe I read that the sense was that most of the people leaving would be accessing Mahar Highway, and not so much going in the other direction, even if they were looking to pick up the interstate at, near the Plaza and head west. But the sense is that people would go around, get on the Route 3, I guess, at Union Street and proceed that way to go, to go west on 128?
Correct. That's what we found based on Google Maps mapping and some other mapping softwares. The predominant movement will be from up Mahar Highway for the employment center. We looked at the census data, we looked at the distribution.
From personal experience, that's where Waze tries to send me, and I never go that way. I always take the left on to Washington and everything. So I was surprised to hear that, but you've got some data behind that.
We did. We looked at all the employment centers for people living in that census tract, where they would be going, what points they would be going to. Most of it, as you can imagine, is towards Boston, and that's what our best research has, has led us up to Mahar Highway. That's going to be the, the shortest route for them.
Okay. So until Phase 2 is completed, all of the traffic coming out of Phase 1 would be onto Plain Street. Most of it would be taking, sorry? Most of it, the traffic would be coming out onto Plain Street, taking a left on Plain and then a left on Mahar.
Correct, majority.
And then when Phase 2 is completed, there's direct access to Mahar from either Phase 1 or Phase 2.
The whole, yes, correct, the whole side.
Yeah, all right. And you, you're in concurrence with that point of view?
Yeah, we had made some comments related to distribution. And the idea that you were talking about, that people may use Washington Street to, you know, Route 37, Granite Street, and we confirmed what they had responded with, looking at, you know, travel times and looking at route. at, you know, travel times and looking at routing, looking at Waze, looking at Google Maps, looking at it during peak periods, and that corridor, using the Route 37 corridor to go through five corners, goes through a bunch of lights before you get to 93. And so even for people going to the 128 corridor, going towards Dedham and points north, are more likely to go to Route Three and then get on 93 there than to try to go up past, by the mall. So it, it, it makes sense. They also did a sensitivity analysis, assuming, because we were concerned about the intersections along that route, they did a sensitivity analysis to look at what it would mean if vehicles did go that way, and we still didn't see a significant impact at those intersections. There's adequate capacity to handle traffic if it did go that way.
Okay, thank you.
I will say, for the sensitivity analysis, we did use a conservative, we doubled what we would even project going up that route.
Okay, thank you.
Member McCollum?
Thank you. My question is more along the lines of, how do you consider the traffic impacts of the former Motel Six site being developed, and how is that part of your calculations?
I'm sorry, I'm not familiar exactly with the exact location of Motel Six?
Intersection of Union and Ivory. Can you just talk more about how you calculate that new property coming online?
Yes, we have that, we had that included, yes. We did a review with former town staff on what was planned in the area. We thoroughly reviewed all of the, all the approved and reasonably foreseen developments that would be in the area, and we included those ones, specifically the old Motel Six. We did include the volumes from that, and I believe any of the improved, they believe they were re-timing the lights near there. So we did include the findings of their study, as well as a general 1% background growth, 1% per year general background growth to cover anything that might have gotten missed, or anything that is not foreseen at this time, but that could come up reasonably.
Thank you.
Thank you. Member Kane?
Thank you. I think, though, we were just talking traffic planning right now, but it sounds to me like we're going to have people that are going to get onto Maher Highway. We've got a road that will go there in Phase Two. Why don't we just build that road right now, too?
I can, I can defer to the applicant, but I believe the intent was to use that as a construction access point for Phase One?
I mean, board members, do you think that, you know, it's worth, you know, asking them to consider a different approach for the construction access, or?
Right now, pursuant to the agreement with the seller, Messina, we won't have, so as you know from the phasing, we'll be buying one parcel of land, we'll buy, we'll be purchasing the other parcel of land about 12 months later.
Got it.
So we will not own the land, nor will we have rights on that land until we own it.
That's a great answer, okay.
All right, then, with regards to traffic planning, my only other comment would be, yeah, that Plain Street, Washington intersection is a nightmare already. All I can do is blindly trust my traffic peer review and my traffic engineer for the project, so, hope you guys nail it.
I don't have anything else on traffic.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think that member Kane raises a fair point about having that other access open, whether it's some sort of easement or acknowledgement that regardless of cars, there's going to be people walking over there from the different apartments to get up down the road. So I think that might be something to explore a little bit more, to see how we could help out with the left and left for people heading up to the highway, if that's the way that it looks like people are going to go. So that might be something to consider before the next meeting. And, yeah, I think as far as the traffic goes, I know there's some items outstanding. It looks like a lot of it has to do with the, the site plan and some of the, the driving, the turns and the different aspects and that. It's probably more of a question for the applicant or counsel, but when, when are you expecting the site plan materials to be updated and submitted?
So I, that's a good question. I mean, I think once the Civil has responded, that would be an appropriate time to incorporate the, the site plan revisions that Mr. Lucas is talking about, and also take care of the Civil at the same time. Is it, do you have a different view on that, Mark? Yeah, so, as soon as we get the Civil peer review and those comments, and to that end, we have a meeting on Thursday, I think, with the Civil peer reviewer and Nick Delacavo, our engineer.
Apologies for stepping out, but just to confirm that we do have a working meeting on, on Thursday, I put it in the calendar, so we kind of have a draft response back from Eric Diaz from Strongpoint, and so we just kind of want to meet as a team. Eric needed some understanding on, on a couple matters, and then I think the Civil report will be kind of sent to the board for, for review. Just to note, the water and sewer are expected to be backed by, I would say, the end of the month. Weston Sampson, their report last week was like two to three weeks out, so this week is probably one to two. And then for water, last week it was two to three again, so right now it's about two, one to two weeks for those, two, two reports. And then just to skip on one more note from a fiscal analysis impact, we do have a draft, and we're just kind of looking at it, and that will be issued fairly soon, too. So all the peer reviewers are coming back, they're going to come back, I hate to say at one time, but it will all kind of move some conversations forward. So things are happening behind the scenes with the peer review, and the next big thing will be on Thursday with our team meeting regarding Civil.
Okay, great, thank you for that. All right. Did you, Attorney Maranella, did you have anything else in the presentation that you wanted to go over this evening, or should I turn it over to public?
I think we're, we're good, thank you.
Okay, all right. So this is a public meeting, and so if there's anyone here to comment or question on 10 Plain Street, come on up and give your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for having us. And my name's T. N. Cody, I live at 30 Torrey Road. I'm a business agent for Boston Pipe Brothers Local 537, and also representative for the South Shore Building Trades. I want to thank Tremor Crowe Residential for looking into this development, to develop this property, and just want to thank them for their presentation with some tasteful changes. I really like what they've come up with tonight. But I feel the need to state that South Shore and Braintree has the largest per capita building trade members in the state. I rise to ask that Tremor Crowe Residential would allow for a sit-down with South Shore Building Trades, which represents upwards of 1,000 members in Braintree, and discuss building this project with the building trades' skill and experience while implementing community standards. I will close by thanking them for the electronic communications that I've gotten from them, but stress the importance to the residents of Braintree to discuss this project opportunities with South Shore Building Trades in person, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Huang, 25, Lakeside Drive. I have a couple questions tonight. First was to continue the traffic information. When you do the survey, have you looked into the impact on the merge of Route Three and 95 to the identify whether people who prefer to use the Route Three traffic versus 37? I travel, I commute to Boston three days a week, and that is where the nightmare is, is from Union Street traffic all the way to Route Three, to 93 and 95. That's where the corner that determine where people prefers to go. Every time the traffic back up because Route Three going to Boston and going to 128, and so this is where I would like to ask, have you done the study impact on the traffic hour in that corner? As a long-time, 25-years-old residence, I travel on that road every week, and I know that the day that I need to go into post office before go to work, I'd rather take Washington Street to Common Street, to the highway versus Union Street connections, and also the, we get so many accidents on Union Streets already, so I would ask if the traffic study has incorporate that bottleneck in between 93, Route Three, and 95?
Okay, thank you. Well, so I'll go through some of the comments and give them an opportunity to respond. So just whether or not the, when they're analyzing where they're expecting residents to go, whether they've looked at, particularly in the morning, how it gets all backed up there.
Right, if that is being analyzed in the traffic study. The second traffic is walkable perspective, safety of residents who walk to Washington Street. Last meeting from the zoning board have asked for study, if we can provide some. The reason I'm asking again because last week, when I was traveling from that intersection, I clearly see a gentleman who walked off from the bar walk across the rainroad, and the train, the horn started. By the time he was just walking, by the time the horn started until the gate closed, he's just one step away from being hit by that gate. So I'm going to ask is have that been studied from the residents walking to town for traffic safety perspective? And also I did looking at where the walking way from where we currently have the bar walk construction entrance, that is a rainroad course that have no gate at all. And if you are opening up the building for walking across to Washington Street, there's no gate at that intersection from the back. If you're looking at from Building Four walking over to Washington Street, there's no gate for residents to walk over. There's only one horn of alert when trains coming through. So there's two sections that's really close by, and I would last, from the zoning board, I asked if there's a study regarding to safety of residents walking across the rainroad. We know, I know we concern a lot about car traffic or about the safety of residents.
Okay, yeah, I know one of the, the comments in the traffic, based on the site plan, was what the applicant's plans were for that crossing from Building Four over to Hancock Street. And then as far as the other, the other train crossing, is that Plain Street that you were talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so I saw in, on hand at 5:30 at night. That's why it bring, make me come up here and bring up that concerns again. And this, another question I have is, this plan, does it include the approval of Phase Two? And what's the criteria decision if it's included or not included to approve the Phase Two of the building? Example, is the decision based on Phase One, what are the occupancy rate that is expected? Example, if they build it and only 12, only 40% occupancy rate, would that be a criteria for the board, for the town to continue approve Phase Two building? What if the schoolchildren is more than was proposed it, that impact of budget, and impact the revenue that the town get from this project? Would that be a criteria for Phase Two continue? And how about what is the safety measurement before Phase Two can be continued? So those are my questions to ask. How is Phase Two is going to be continued if there's another 12 months to make decision on the purchase? Because that parcel, that location, we are looking for that to be one of the new and innovative living space that the town can take opportunity for. So I want to ask the board if you can reconsider what are the criteria for Phase Two, and are we approving the entire project right now, or just approving Phase One's design? Thank you.
All right, thank you, and I'll let the applicant speak to it, but I think the request is to approve all of it, and then it sounds like your questions are whether or not there can be conditions built in that monitors when the construction starts on Phase Two based on what actually happens?
Right, if they have not purchased the property, how could we approve it as a whole?
Okay.
They're not the single owner now.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I think if there's any other public comment, then I think at the end, the applicant team wants to respond to some of the questions, but might as well see if there's other public comment right now, and then come back to it.
Liz Page, 137 St. Zav, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I guess my question is, with the parking, or not the parking, but with the entrance and the exit of Phase One on Plain Street, and we feel that, am I correct in understanding that they are saying they believe that most of the cars exiting the development will take a left onto Plain Street?
That's my, my, yes, that's my understanding.
And that's the more difficult way to turn as you're exiting this property. So you're going to have to go across traffic. So to, if you take a right, you're going to be queuing at the light. But if you want to take a left, you're going to have to go through two lanes of traffic, of people that are commuting and trying to get to their destination, but yet we're assuming everybody here is going to take a left and cut through that traffic. I, I don't see that as being a really good plan, and it just seems like it's going to be problematic. And so I think that that's something that needs to be considered. My other concern that I have is I, I still have not seen any, any design showing the internal traffic design, and are they going to have any traffic calming factors in on their property? Speed bumps, speed humps, I mean, this could be the type of place where you could potentially have cars driving quite fast. It covers a vast area, so I think that, you know, if you're going to have a lot of people walking, especially if you're going to have car trucks, and you're going to have a play area, and I think there needs to be some kind of an internal design, and you may even just have cars cutting through here to avoid lights.
Yeah, and then that's part of, the site plan will come, they do have, I don't think they went over it tonight, but they do have, they've just brought up on the screen some, some internal regulation of car traffic, but I expect that we'll hear more about that when we get the updated site plan also.
Okay, all right, well, that, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment questions?
Hi, good evening. My name is Valene Weeks. I live at 1265 Washington Street. I am also the president of the Dia Helsavik Association. I live just across from the, this complex that is being proposed, and it has been brought up before that, you know, this whole complex looks like a storage unit type of project, and it does, and I think that the developers can do better with that. I do give the developers some kudos for doing a, you know, a playground for the children and an area for kids to play and some common areas, but also the traffic area that, you know, the previous woman that was up here had mentioned, taken a, leaving that complex, the natural way to go is to take a right onto Plain Street, across down to Franklin Street to, to the highways, not to take a left, crossing two lanes of traffic, and then take another left onto Maher Highway. This area, this whole intersection is a travesty of This area, this whole intersection is a travesty of insanity at most times of the day. Something needs to be done as far as the traffic concern in this intersection. Something needs to be done. And, and then that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Frank Baxter. I am a business rep for Coppin's Local 346. I cover the South Shore and Braintree area. Represent 200 men and women that live in the town of Braintree. And we do have a meeting set up with Tramco Crow, which is great. I just wanted to mention that this is a great project for the men and women that do live in the town of Braintree. I like the project. I like the changes they made from the box look to the dormers now. Looks a lot better than it did. So I compliment them on that. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, Rob Cadyer, 306 Washington Street. I just got a question. I know that most of the questions have been about traffic today, so if that's the main focus, I mean, I was going to go into finance, but i- if it's just traffic, I can save you the time and just bring it back another night. So is this just traffic tonight?
It's a combination. We heard about architecture. We, this of course won't be the last meeting, so if there's, you know, up to you, basically.
Okay. Just because I feel like I might lose the notes before then. So pretty much just from the, the financial perspective. So looking into overall school costs, which I brought up the last time, in Braintree, it costs roughly about $20,000 per year to educate a student. There's a projected 125 students that would be living here, 22% on an IEP. And the breakdown of that would be 97 in basic class and 28 on IEPs. The IEP cost per student is about $45,000 a year. With those two, 97 times 20,000 is 1.94 million, and 28 times 45,000 is 1.26 million. Sorry if I sounded a little off, I'm just getting over a cold. So about 3.2 million for schools, and then about 312,000 for police, 209,000 for fire, and 90,000 for other center, mainly in a residential neighborhood. There's also Hanover Waymouth, which is located on Route 53 in a wooded area on the border with Hingham. Now, in terms of the overall, because of the blended average, the average per unit valuation of this project would be about $388,000 per unit. But that's, some of these complexes, particularly the ones not in Braintree, they are valued fairly higher. Elevation is at 352, Ashler Park, 454,000, and Hanover Waymouth, 392,000. So compared, and based on the location, these are kind of non-comparable, just based on location where this one is sandwiched in between two fairly active train lines, the Kingston Line and the Fall River New Bedford Line. I work out at Bayshore, and I do hear the trains thundering down the track about, about two to three times while I'm in there for the average 30, 90-minute workout. None of these other projects are located near the train tracks, and just the location and the noise could be a detriment to overall property value and assessed cost and thus property tax income.
I will just point out also, we are still waiting on the fiscal impact peer review, so we will be getting some outside comments reviewing that as well for the board.
Okay. And, okay, yeah, so if we're still waiting on that, I can just hold, I can just hold everything else because it pretty much is just comparing different, the different complexes in different towns. I would just like to see like what the average cost per unit for these complexes in Braintree would be. Best to compare stuff in the same town, so compared to Braintree Village Ridge, Skyline, Landing, 53. Pretty much like what it comes down to is just because like planning can best be described as hoping for the best, preparing for the worst, and assuming various levels of risk at all other incomes. And there are still being a lot of unknowns, and given that this is solely a residential proposal, it is a higher risk for the town than if there was a mixed-use component, including restaurants, shops, and smaller supermarket, things that would be of benefit to the town's finances and the residents' financial well-being. Many people I've talked to just repeat the sentiment that there's a missed opportunity So yeah, I can, I can just leave it there until we get the fiscal impact analysis done. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right, so I think, oh, we've got one more.
My name is Robert Tomer. I live in Central Ave. I've lived in the town my whole life, and I'm not certain where they're getting the idea about how they're going to mitigate traffic. That's a bottleneck. What I would do is I would direct the traffic down to Mahar. They say they're going to do the construction, the first phase, they're going to do that. The people are not going to be able to come out of Plain Street. There's no way. It's a bad idea. What I would do is I would find a way to make two lanes. I would make the, the construction pod go one part. I would break it in somewhere, put it farther down. And whoever lives there in the first phase, when it's done, I'd have that go like a slope to Mahar, like where it is now, where Bayshore is. So Bayshore, I would have that's where the residents go. And I would find a way further on down and do the, put the construction people there. I would not, under any circumstances, have the traffic go up Plain Street. It's just unworkable. We're going to have another light. There's a light, and there's a light, and there's a light. I mean, there's kind of, that's kind of lost on a lot of the people that don't live here or just moved here. Being here 40 years or 60 years, that traffic doesn't ever go away, ever. The other thing is I have a question about, it might be out of the preview, so if it is, I'm sorry. Where they're doing the Hotel Six to Dover, someone made a decision a long time ago to not cut the granite, because that's another place where people can't pull out into traffic. There's no way. They, they put that there when, 20 years ago, and the traffic's only gotten worse, so it's unmanageable. There is one more thing, too. I think the town engineer about 15 years ago, maybe someone can help me here if they know better than I do. The town engineer took Mahar Highway and made it to one lane. Okay? And then it goes, it crosses Pearl Street, and it becomes two lanes. There's no chance they're going to make that two lanes again, are they? Because that was made one lane for a reason. I would hope that they didn't, they wouldn't change that because out of need. Because that's just another example of how the, you know, the, building the houses and all the, the jobs and everything, I get it. And you guys are going to have to work out the details on the money and how it all works. I get these guys want to build it. I guess, I know they have the right. They do. But you have to work out first the traffic. That is the most important component of this. I would not let anybody go out on Plain Street. It's just unworkable. There's no way to exit and not cause a further bottleneck, if there's such a thing. Thank you for your time. You guys are awesome. You guys did a good job this time. You did a good job this time.
Thank you. So we had traffic-related questions. I think it might be helpful to, while you're here, to have a few more answers on them. I know you talked initially about the trip distribution out to Route 3. If you could just go over a little bit more how you calculated who was going on Hancock or Washington and out that way, that would be helpful.
Sure, yeah. So we did, we did do an investigation of the regional travel network, how people get into Boston, how people get onto 93, Route 3, where they go into. I will say, just to clarify, we do have the majority of the traffic going up Mahar. We do have people going up the Hancock corridor as well. So it's not like we're blowing that off. We just have more traffic favoring Mahar Highway. That's what we found in our research. That's where the jobs are, the people that currently work, the people that have jobs currently in Braintree. The new residents are going to have analogous jobs in analogous markets. We did all the research of that. We went through it, and that's what everything is telling us. We did a gravity model, and we did a sensitivity analysis in case if our gravity model was incorrect.
And so the research is basically looking at, I'm just using the houses on Plain Street as an example, sort of watching if, where they're going to get to Boston, are they going?
The existing travel patterns, going through the whole, kind of the cordon network, as we would call it, drawing a big net around our whole study area. Where do people come in and out, existing, and where, where would they be going?
Okay, thank you. And I'm not sure if this would be you or one of the engineers, but the, the crossings around the railroad tracks, both Hancock and Plain Street?
Again, I can defer to the team. We are working with the MBTA. We, we are aware of the crossings. Just as a quick thing, I know it's been brought up before, the Hancock Avenue site driveway is no longer being pursued. There will be a fence to prevent pedestrian activity going across the at-grade crossings. The MBTA and Keolos was very adamant that that happened, so we will be looking at different alternatives. We won't be crossing at that location. As far as improvements at the Plain Street/Washington intersection, that, that grade crossing, we will be looking at that as well with, with the MBTA and Keolos, to come up with any solutions that could come out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Mark Beransky, Tramco Crow. Just to clarify, we've been talking with the MBTA for quite a while about the site and about access. While we're going on the premise right now that we will not have access at that point on Hancock, we are engaging in DTR studies for the crossings. And, you know, what will ultimately occur is the calculations be presented to the engineers, and they'll make a decision. We would like to have pedestrian access directly across over to Hancock. We'd also like to have resident vehicle access. The resident vehicle access is the most unlikely to occur, pedestrian access is possible. And right now, I think we feel pretty good about emergency vehicle access. But that is all in the hands of the MBTA, subject to the DTR reports that we are releasing work on now.
Okay, thank you. Then, I know we sort of went through traffic. I'll see if any board members have any other, oh, yep, yes, come on up.
I just want to clarify the traffic question is, have you done any simulation by putting the address where the new property will be for that simulation? The reason I ask because people who coming from Plain Street from Stop &amp; Shop, they always take the highway. But people who coming from Avon, from 137, so always taking 137. That's why I was asking if such simulation for that location to go across different, different side of the town. So example, from Braintree, I worked in Norwalk before. I worked at Dedham before. The traffic pattern is different from Braintree. And now I work in Gas Street, Boston. So I want to see if such simulation had been incorporated with that location go across two different sides of the 128. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Just can confirm, yes, we did. We looked at locations all across the region. We did look at specific locations. Off the top of my head, I believe the, the legacy place in Dedham was one of the locations that we picked south of the site, just to see how people would interact. And yes, we did look at, we did look at all the regional towns that, that was, I believe, 0.2% employment or greater for the, for the census tract, so.
All right, thank you. And I know that we didn't get into it too much tonight, but I did, just want to mention the playground. I appreciate the, taking a look at that front section particularly, and, and different ways to use that. I, I think that as a long-term plan, from my perspective, seems like a, a better approach. I know we talked before about potentially having bathrooms or picnic tables, and I just wanted to see if that was still part of the plan, or if that could be part of it when the site plan gets put in place.
Yes, with the picnic tables in process on the public bathrooms. We're still trying to figure a way that would make it work within the infrastructure, and I don't think we have a definitive solution.
Okay, all right, fair enough. Thank you. Okay, that was pretty much all that I had at this point. And the architecture, I think a couple of people noted it, but definitely a big upgrade. So thank you for taking the time to take a look at that. Any other member comments, questions for this evening? Member Ken?
On the, yes, please. On the sequencing of the transactions for the two parcels, so you buy parcel one, construct the buildings, and then at that point, when do you close on parcel two?
We close on parcel two within 12 months of the close of parcel one. So we will be in construction on parcel one when we're closing on parcel two. We'll probably, we'll be close to having first units in the phase one.
Okay, so.
But won't quite have them.
All right, so then traffic wouldn't be an issue until after you'd acquired phase two, the property there?
The traffic that will occur early in the project is construction vehicle traffic, but you're correct. Unless we moved exceedingly faster than expected on construction, we would not have first units until we'd already closed on the second phase.
But, but there wouldn't really be a lot of traffic from phase one?
Correct.
Until after you'd closed on phase two? So you, in theory, I'm jumping ahead, would have access to direct traffic to Mahar Highway before, the whole phase one, 400, whatever units, wouldn't all be coming out onto Plain Street?
That is correct, yes.
At one point in time, there would, by the time phase one was fully rented, those people would already have access?
Yeah, and I just want to caution with the caveat that the phasing for phase two in terms of the construction work, when the site work would be done, I can't speak to it, so there may be a couple of months of lag, you know? So I don't want you to think that 12 months and a day, there's a fully viable road running, you know? It'll take a while to bring it online. But I also agree with your contention that since we expect the first units in the first building in phase one, 14, 15, to 16 months, there's going to be a two to, two to four month buffer in which site work probably can check up on the, so that cars could exit as well as via plane.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Development team, this was a very responsive update, touching in the volume of rooms four and five, and the addition of the more traditional architectural features. I'd like to see that pushed further, though. I'd like to see a more historic color palette for the exterior. Right now, it feels a little mountain, a little ski resort, and I'd like to see that to be more of a decidedly New England feel. Moving from there, the school bus shelter was a wonderful addition, as were the parks. I'd be interested in the circulation, and if you could work that to prohibit the cut-through for those going towards Avon, Holbrook, because right now you can cut most of the line by cutting through the property. So to take a look at that. And then I'd have questions for the, the traffic teams, and if there's any recommendation for remedy or restriction, if, if you're going to limit like left-hand turns or things like that to help move traffic that might otherwise be blocking the roadways. like that to help move traffic that might otherwise be blocking the roadways.
Just to address the, the cut-through, MDM did a video, and very minor number of cars. I think that's in the report and was peer reviewed, too. So, you know, I hope that addresses that.
Okay. I, I just, I wonder, though, if that's going to become an attractive route?
I think it's probably less attractive in the future use, because it's developed as, you know, residential driveway, roadways. Today, you can rip through there. It's a wide-open parking lot, especially if you're coming from Mahar. There's nothing out there. It's just wide open, and then there's more parked cars to get closer to where the registry was when they were operational. So, under existing conditions, as Attorney Marinelli mentioned, MDM had done a study and determined that the cut-through was minimal. So I think it will, we can expect it to continue to be minimal under the future condition.
Sorry, if I could just note as well, on the screen, you'll know, I'm not sure if my, which it is. We do have traffic calming measures. We have raised speed tables, which also help. That in conjunction with the roundabout, the whole idea of the roundabout was to slow vehicles down.
Yeah.
Turns available to those coming out of the property? Like, would you, no left-hand turn, certain hours, or anything like that?
Not likely. Turn restrictions by time typically aren't honored. People don't follow them. You know, you, it requires enforcement. And turn restrictions in general are restricting people from going where they want to go and making them follow more security route if they do follow, you know, adhere to the turn restriction. So I, I wouldn't recommend a specific turn restrictions at driveways.
And then my last question was just to go a little bit more in-depth on the emergency access to the buildings that are now divided for Building Four. We had talked about that a bit last time, and it was touched on by the development team, but if we could have a little bit more information about that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, the, the letter of September 5th from the MBTA really does not prohibit emergency access. I think that's, as, as Mark pointed out, there's a diagnostic study being done for anything more than emergency access, but emergency access is, is what we expect from, from Hancock.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for the, tonight?
Steve, I also want to say thank you for going back to the drawing board here and making a couple of minor updates. I appreciate it. It shows, and I also, I do want to reiterate the, the speaker, the comments of the rest of the board in terms of the playgrounds and whatnot. I think that's great. I do think that Member Conley is, I'll stand with you on that. I, I think we can upscale this a little bit more to our theme, like to the New England theme. I think we're so close. I think, I think, I see it. I see the, the gables. You've, you've done everything that we've asked. I think we're almost there. If we can get it a little bit more like Jonathan's Landing or something, maybe it's the color palette or something. I'm, I'm not sure what it is. It feels like we're 90% there, though, and, and, and I really do appreciate all the efforts that have been done. I think maybe we can sharpen the pencil and, and see what final tweaks can be made to get it more in line with that Jonathan's Landing kind of upscale-y final appearance. But when I look across, like, I love this rendering. When I look across, I mean, tremendous improvements. So thank you so much for your time today. And then, yeah, I, I guess I just, I also think, I remember Kent brought up a good point about the phasing and, and the importance of getting that, that Mahar Highway up onboard as soon as possible. I think that's, I mean, that's, that's critical. I, I will be really, really disappointed, because this will impact my, my commute personally if, if everybody goes down Plain Street, so please don't hurt me. Thank you.
All right. That is, we're looking for a motion to continue to November 12th.
So move.
Motion by Member Kent. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for the updates and the presentation, and so looking for a motion to close tonight's hearing.
We'll move.
Motion by Member Kent. We have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Conley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.